Thank you. I'm going to be presenting this item. As you may recall, during the budget deliberation process in late May, a proposal was presented at one of the budget work sessions to develop a comprehensive budget audit and organizational performance office. After some discussion at the council meeting and that evening and a subsequent work session, we were directed to bring this potential proposal back for council consideration at some date in August. And that has now been scheduled for this particular meeting. So we'll just be presenting some additional information to advocate for development of this office. As we mentioned at the time, in past budget years, including this particular budget cycle, we've asked for positions from time to time to enhance our budget audit and organizational performance functions within the city. As you know, we are constrained with resources and have a number of priorities to fund. And up to this point, we haven't been able to fund those particular priorities, although council certainly saw a need at the time. But we've had discussions with them, past discussions, for enhancements in these areas. That need continues to this day and continues to grow as we mature as an organization serving a community of over 200,000 citizens. And expectations continue to grow around process improvement and rolling out initiatives that are consistent with council priorities. So again, these are not new challenges. And as the city matures, the need for these services only grows and does not retract. So the purpose of the presentation tonight is to talk about the risks that we face in the absence of these robust functions, both financial and otherwise in terms of risk. And then how do we compare with peer cities in terms of being right-sized to support these functions? So what is our current environment without an internal audit function? That's formal in nature, that's based on doing a risk assessment in the organization and then going out and delivering internal audit services based on the assessment of risk. Just to give you some idea of what our environment is, based on the services we provide, and we provide a vast number of services in a variety of departments. So our payment collection methods are varied, as you might expect. We have about 26 locations in which we collect city funds for various services. And these processes are different depending on the type of service, whether you're getting an inspection permit, whether you're paying for a faults alarm through the police department, whether you're riding a transit bus and making payment. And we haven't even considered the individual buses in which we're collecting city revenues. We're just talking about locations, at physical addresses, approximately 26 locations. You may say, "Well, what's the order of magnitude?" I just quickly did a rough look at the audit for the year. I'm not including property tax collections, state shared revenues that we receive. We're collecting somewhere in the neighborhood of about $15 million to $20 million a year at these various sites, or billing through and receiving revenues. A great variety of those revenue sources. So the amount of money we're talking about is very substantial. What's another potential risk area in which having a robust internal audit function could help us ensure that we're safeguarding the city's assets? In terms of finance and what we do in terms of tracking assets, GFOA has established as a best practice, and when I say GFOA, it's the Government Finance Officers Association, which provides guidance to local governments across the country. They've established as a best practice that you track assets valued at $5,000 and greater on your financial statements. What does that mean? We maintain a fixed asset inventory, or capital asset inventory, of items $5,000 above. We do physical observations of those assets based on a random selection. But what about those items that are less than $5,000, that don't get tracked within our financial system? What processes are we using now to ensure that those assets are safeguarded? Those assets would include items that are very easy to pick up and walk off with, such as a computer and other small items, radios, things like that. Right now, we're relying on departments such as IT and other departments to help track those assets. An internal audit function could help ensure that the processes in each of those individual departments are being handled in the most effective way possible. So there's a potential area of risk that an internal audit function would help review. Another opportunity is revenue contracts. To give you an example, we have a number of contracts that we enter into with third parties in which we get a percentage of the revenue, or in which we have leases that escalate with a CPI increase each year. Right now, we're relying on those departments to make sure that they're reviewing those payments that are coming in with those agencies that they're working with, for example, airport contracts, and making sure that those revenues and those year-end true-ups are occurring as they should. When we've done review of those contracts in the past, when we've had a project to review them, we have yielded money for the benefit of the city. We have found where certain CPI increases weren't being adhered to, or year-end true-ups weren't being done, where the city was owed additional money. That is a risk area that we need to be reviewing and can yield money for the city. Another area is procurement cards. We generally call them P cards, but they're procurement cards. It's where cards have been issued to individuals. So if they go for travel and training, or they need to buy small purchases in order to do their job, and we don't have to cut a PO and cut a check, many organizations, our peers, have procurement cards. Roughly about 19 percent of our employees have procurement cards.
Nineteen percent?
Nineteen percent, roughly. And that's based on about 1,471 full-time employees. Of those, about 280 cards exist. We do have processes in place that when the statement comes in, you're to match up the receipts with the statement. That's to be reviewed and ensured that it's a city purpose, a business purpose for those items. And then we process that.
Are you factoring in, when you're speaking of these numbers, is that taking account both organizations?
This is just the city, not including, thank you for the opportunity to clarify that. The numbers that I've spoken about so far are just the city. I don't have that data for the utility. So with the P cards, we do have a process. But one of the things we need to be ensuring is that those processes are being adhered to. You know, someone may sign off on procurement card statements saying they've reviewed it. You want to have from time to time a random selection where someone's going in and reviewing that information outside of the department to make sure that those processes are being adhered to. Another risk area relates to grants. For fiscal year '13, which is the most recently completed audit year, we had about $30 million in grant funds, federal and state grant funds, in which we have to report to another agency. I'm sorry, did you have a question?
We were just trying to see if we can kind of get to...
How this relates at the PWC piece?
Well, just kind of probably, because I think everyone's kind of seen the slides because it was in the package, but kind of move on to the ending part on the importance of why the budget audit office would be good consolidated. I mean, that's kind of really...
Okay. Well, these aren't risks that are just borne by the city alone.
Okay.
The utility system would probably have similar risks, as any organization would. It's complex and as large as we all are. So I'm identifying items related to the city, but there are probably similar issues potentially with the PWC as well.
So basically, in your professional opinion, you're saying that as they move down the line of merging these functions, that we're already out of line. And so you really would need this person on a larger scale with the utilities factored in here because right now, you're just giving us the city fairville's...
Information. I mean, clearly, if we're talking about support functions, which would include finance, human resources, all these other functions, these are similar support functions. And it would make sense that if you're going to do this, certainly as we're initiating this process, it would make sense to examine it clean slate. Should we do this as a combined group, rather than kind of go back down the path we've gone on others and then have to deal with merger later? Or realignment of those services? So I'll try to keep pace because I know we have another, a number of other items to address. Okay, quickly.
Ms. Smith, hang on one second. Mr. Rogers?
Well, just as a point of information, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Blanchard, the utility has these functions that they're discussing.
Yes, we already have in place. Have, for nine years, had our audit and our budget function embedded in our operations, in our operational department on a regular basis. And it's not strictly budget, it's not strictly audit. They do other things, and interface on a native basis and all those things. It's part of our fiduciary responsibilities and part of the city's fiduciary responsibilities too, to make sure you're managing what is and everything right. And that is part of our process. I do think at this point in time, the utility is operating very well and we feel very comfortable at this point in time as far as budget. And if the city wants to, I think they really should be doing that. I was able to, over the years, it's not something you can do just by, you know, be able to reposition people and assign them duties, that kind of stuff, to make sure we're doing this without any additional personnel. If the city needs some information from us, as far as providing stuff to make the city council feel comfortable as far as being their fiduciary responsibility to know the utility, we'd be glad to furnish whatever we can to do that. I don't think it would work in trying to, we only have three people. It's not like we've got six people. I don't think we'd be able to move them out of those positions and shift them somewhere else and still provide these services that we're providing through our operating departments. It would be that provides you whatever we need. But I do think, I agree, makes sense. We really need to have a good budgeting and audit function.
Right. Let's go to Ted Moon, Mayor Pro Tim, and then Mr. McDougal.
This is a question for both Mrs. Smith and the city manager. I remember when we were across the hall during our budget discussions and each department came up, and Mrs. Smith told us that this was a critical function. And then we went through each position and said what we were feeling or not feeling. So the question would be, is Mr. Borges, to say we identified we need three, we were told a one auditing, or one auditor, and three or four more to do the other few performance functions, like the chart you got coming up showing, would that be internal realignment, or are we going to be asking council for, say, four more FTEs, let them do a budget amendment, which we just voted on a couple of months ago? Is this a new organization? Do we take them on this staff and field this down? Or are you going to be asking us for additional, you know, on the city staff?
Thank you, Mr. Moon. And I think that we propose that we would realign our existing employees and add a few more and amend the budget to have a contribution from the utility to help pay for those central functions. I would actually invite a response to the question. I thought I saw in the budget of the utility this year that we were adding back an internal audit position that had previously been assigned to, I guess, maybe navigate. So I was led to believe that the internal audit function had been vacant or reassigned for a period of a couple of years or something like that. So we're adding it back. So I may be misinformed.
Just a good part of the audit is you have to have records and you have to use the information that's in the system to do that. As I said, we're changing all our financial systems and those types of things. And we needed help. I mean, I've reassigned 17 people to the navigating program. So again, existing staff. But anyway, we decided to vacate that position until we got the system back up and running. And now that we have that, we're ready to put that position back in place and using internal staff, staff, and encourage to be able to start that whole process using our new system.
Mayor Pro Tim, then Mr. McDougal, then Mr. Culver.
Okay.
So the three FTEs that you have, Mr. Blanchard, they're doing the audit and something else?
We have one person who will be doing the audit. The other two people are maybe our budgeting folks. When I say budgeting, it's not just doing the document. It's following the budget all the way through and encumbrances and making sure that people are having the money, know where the money's at, so they can get their job done. So they're working with the operations department on a regular basis and all that stuff during the approval process.
Is there a way to see what the recommended, if there is any recommendation for this budget audit?
That the peer comparison on the back there.
There is, if you want me to move there. Okay.
I got a couple more questions first, Lisa, I'm sorry. Mr. Culver, then Mr. Wright.
I just, I had my mind deviated for a second. So the person you were saying you moved to the navigating program was your internal, one of your internal audit?
We reassigned our risks.
Mr. Wright?
I just want to be clear, Mr. City Manager. Best practices as far as the budget is concerned, what was your idea of setting up the budget for PWC? And also, what did the PWC set up their budget? And you working with them as far as, were you talking about a merger for you to better understand budgeting on both sides at the budget year term? What was the initial problem or concern that you had with the budgeting?
Well, as it stands now, our budget capacity is not set up to be devoted to budget work 100 percent of the time all year long. The analysts are doing, are financial analysts and budget analysts and have to wear many hats through the year. So because they have limited capacity even to deal with the city operations, they certainly don't have capacity to then add in additional work related to understanding utility funds. So I think, I would say, I believe your statement is what I was thinking, will have a central budget function that would be elevated to a department level and be able to provide the kind of oversight and governance level budget understanding for the council, while leaving the operational decisions and allocation decisions, you know, inside the funds to the commission and the staff at the utility.
So why would be that?
We haven't moved on that. We made a recommendation at budget time, but we were doing a lot of things. And it was decided that we would defer that conversation till now. And additionally, since I saw in the budget process that the commission was proposing to add back the auditor that had been moved before, that rather than just do that, that it might be a good opportunity while we were moving people around to create a central audit function that would report to the council or a board of the council, perhaps a board that consisted of several council members and one or two commissioners, and potentially the city manager and general manager. And that group could review the internal audits and direct a program of work that was risk-based through the year.
Ms. Smith?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, is there enough, Mr. Wright?
Can I ask a question of our CFOs? Has this been criticized or found that we're not doing what we should be doing from an audit function in past audits? We use the same auditor.
Yes, I think it was maybe in 2006, in that timeframe. We were, the external auditor actually recommended that we consider adding additional internal audit staff based on the size and complexity of our organization. So it was an actual recommendation directly from the external auditor.
Has that recommendation or criticism come and been made since 2006?
They shared that at that time, and they haven't retracted it, but they don't put the same thing year after year necessarily in there. But that was something that was advised at the time. And also, another item that was discussed at the time was the implementation of a fraud hotline. We've done that, but we've not been in a position to add capacity for internal audit.
Dwight's over here.
I dare say if we asked them today, that that would change at all.
Did we have any comments from the...
And by the way, our audit does include the utility funds, so I'm not sure if they were limiting that comment to just the city side or if that was a collective recommendation.
Did you say we have a fraud hotline?
Yes, sir.
Well, we have no way to investigate the allegation if one comes in on the hotline?
Well, I think the issue isn't just if a call comes in. The question becomes having a hotline and then making sure you're in front of your employees, reminding them throughout the year, every year, because we have a lot of turnover in staff. We have no employees coming on, that the fraud hotline exists, why it exists, and how it can be useful in identifying fraud, abuse, waste within the organization. So our challenge is, while we've had it, we've had a few calls, we just aren't able to educate and promote that hotline in the way that we would like to be able to do it.
Well, I do. Lisa, I'm going to break it down in a layman's terms. Somebody called up and said Tracy is cooking the books. We didn't say Tracy was... Tracy's cooking the books. And how do we, where do we go from that with that allegation?
The limited number of calls that we have received, we have responded to. And we have addressed those concerns. Those concerns all aren't related to what we would strictly consider fraud hotline items. Sometimes their policy matters, sometimes their employee relation matters with the supervisors. People will call the hotline for any number of issues. The concern I have frankly is that we aren't getting more calls. I think we ought to be getting more calls for an organization our size.
Is the city attorney informed of these calls, Michael Shirley?
As appropriate. As appropriate. Depending on the nature of the call, we direct that call to potentially Human Resources Department. We get the department head involved. The city attorney's office has been involved from time to time as we've gotten those calls. And we've addressed those calls when they've come in. But again, the concern is that we want to be able to promote the hotline among employees. So I'm sorry, I didn't understand. The answer is, if somebody calls up and says Tracy is cooking the books... We respond to that call. Okay.
Yes.
Because we don't have anybody, is that what you're saying? That's the point.
We don't have someone dedicated eight hours a day.
So that's the point, we don't have anybody.
So somebody's got to do it in addition to their existing obligations.
Yeah, they call me in.
So when somebody calls, they, you address it? Yes, we do. Okay. And where do you address it to? You do the Karen office, Greg, or do we... Sometimes we do. It depends on the nature of the call. If it has nothing to do with a legal matter and it has everything to do simply with employee relations matter, it may get referred to Human Resources as where that call would go. It depends on the nature of the call.
So what, based on the function that you all have right now with one auditor and two budget people, do you feel that that has been sufficient for you all on the PWC side when it comes to budgeting and internal audit?
The budget side, yes. The internal audit at this point is still doing some troubleshooting with the navigate changeover, so they are not full-time auditing at this point. We have had two people in that position, but we'll have to assign to do that at this time.
I'd like to comment on that. We have two people on the position. One of them retired, the other one was reassigned. With the new systems, there's a lot of checks and balances and things. So we want to start off to see if one auditor would be sufficient to manage our audit function. And if you're not, then you will have to do additional work to do it. That's the concept, step into it slowly, make your determination. How many things we have to do, not good to do system.
Okay. Well, it sounds like there's a need on both sides, so... Oh, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. So we're talking about the audit function. What about the analysis function? I know in previous discussions that we've had, we talked about they have the ability to... Because I mean, I know Lisa and Tracy wear multiple hats, but you know, you've got the financial function, you've got the auditing function, and then you've got the analysis function. Is that a part of what we're going to look at with this as well?
You said the analyze?
Budget analyst.
Budget analyst.
That was a part of the proposal as it relates to the budget function. And actually, to me, the internal audit, the budget and performance measurement management actually complement one another. And you have a beneficial relationship in terms of where they all contribute to helping us be more efficient, more...
Does anybody have any other questions? Okay.
Now, is this coming, you going to ask us for some people down the road? Is that what's coming down?
Well, at the conclusion of the presentation, and if you want me to move to that slide.
Yeah, get to the block.
Oh, hold, okay. So what we, at the end of the day, you've seen the presentation, you've had a copy of it. What we are asking for your guidance on, if you like the concept, if you agree that we need to be investing more in these particular functions, we're asking that you direct the city manager to proceed with the build-out of these functions and ensure that the new functions represent the enterprise, which includes the city's utility, public works commission, and then providing quarterly updates on progress and any quick results we're able to achieve as a result of this.
I'll take that in the form of a motion. Can I take that in the form of a motion, what you just said? Okay. Second, or a question?
Well, I got a second. I got a second. Question, so when we say direct the city manager to proceed with the build-out of these functions, when we say functions, are we talking about people? Are we talking about wearing additional hats? Let's define what the function is.
I think we shared a proposal back in May and actually had a PowerPoint to present that identified that. So I think it's the manager's intent to bring a budget amendment back that would identify the resources needed from a staffing standpoint, as well as the proposed source of funds to pay for that.
So the follow-on component would be the manager would bring back a proposal for additional positions to be funded to meet the functional requirements? So that would be a separate...
And that would, for those of you who remember that proposal and want to go back and find it, or we could send it to you again, it's consistent with that. It's not something entirely new.
It's on the webpage.
And I would like Lisa and Dwight to also be part of that conversation too, as you all...
A question for Mr. Borges. Part of your research proposal, you will look at realignment of existing positions within the city staff somewhere, not just within the finance department, but where you might kind of like deal with the special projects director who took an existing position, zero something. Is that a part of your research?
In the proposal, as I envisioned it, several existing city staff members would fall into the new organizational design and leave their old positions. We would invite some of that on the public work side, but that's their decision. Otherwise, we need to fund those slots.
Ted, would it be helpful at all just to show a couple of those slides? Would the peer comparisons at all, just a very good review?
We've seen it.
The house just got the presentation. Everyone's good?
Read all this.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second? Can you pin it? Direct the city manager to proceed with the build-out of...
Okay, Pro Tim made that second.
Okay, any further discussion?
You got it, Madam Clerk?
And last question. Are we authorizing allocation of funds with this motion?
No.
Okay. That would be a decision at point when it comes down.
I just want to make sure we're all clear. Call for a caution, Mr. Bayer.
Okay. Let's, those in favor, raise your right hand, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Mr. Crisp?
I'll go 11 now.
In favor, it's unanimous, Madam Clerk.
Christmas, Christmas.
So what number is that? We're at 5.04?
5.04. 5.04. Sale of PWC.